...would be upon them. God, we'd ask that you would reimburse and bless them for their sacrifice and their families. And God, give them the resources that they need to accomplish those things set before them, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Carr, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Yeah.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forbes?
And I understand Councilman Gibson's running slightly late, but will be here.
He'll be on his way as soon as possible.
Great, thank you. We're gonna start our meeting, welcome everybody with public comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Hello there.
Hello there. Haven't we met before?
We've met. Welcome, Kathy.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I just wanna make a few short comments on the consent agenda. On item F, the request to redirect the Film Fest surplus funds, just to explain a few things, because some of the people here who are watching may not know that we had our sixth annual short Film Fest last November, very, very, very popular. And all these years, the city has graciously handled receiving the bills, receiving the contributions, and paying out. No city taxpayers' money was spent on it. But it became a little bit too much, and they said, "It would be nice if you could make other arrangements." So we did. We formed our own nonprofit, 501(c)(3). Everything's gonna be the same. We still want you all to support and come and see us, but you just don't have to handle the money. So, that's just explaining, that's why it says, because previously, any monies that were remaining were given to the city. And of course, now, it's gonna go to the 501(c)(3). So thanks for everything you did, and we're still looking forward. Nothing's changed. We all want you to come. Bye.
Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Going, going, gone. Okay. Welcome, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor, Council, fellow Benetians, I'll be quick, and I just, I want to apologize in advance. I may come up again. I want Mike Gibson, Councilman Gibson, to hear this portion, because I'm not sure if he's, I don't know where he's at on this vote, to be honest with you, so I wanna make sure he hears this part. Discussion on the possibility of allowing advertising and the fencing from Marnie Fields and the soccer complex, allowing a portion of the proceeds to go to the soccer league for Benita. I just, as the chairman of the Outreach Committee, they reached out to us, so I wanted to come to council, and I wanted to discuss it with you all, and say that I am in favor of it. And one of the reasons that I would say I'm in favor of it is, you may recall about three years ago, they won a state championship. They won a state championship with the name Benita Skerrings across their chest. There's a lot of pride in the soccer community over at Marnie Fields. And look, 25.9% of the population of Benita Springs right now is Hispanic. A lot of that population is involved with these fields. This will give us an opportunity to let them raise some funds. And at the same time, it's a similar concept to what's going on over at the high school. So I think we can keep it, as long as we are the ones who are steering the boat in regards to how it's gonna look, and we don't make it tacky or outrageous, I think we give them the opportunity to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Chris, you looking to speak? Okay. Anybody that's looking to speak, please raise their hand. If not, we're gonna move on. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
G.
G? Motion to approve the rest?
Second.
Okay, is there a motion, and I'll second that, Laura, thank you, to approve A, B, C, D, E, and F. Further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Hi.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
That's okay.
I'm looking for the things.
That is okay. Item G, Councilwoman Caramba.
I apologize. I vote yes, by the way. Did you find it? I have my notes on it. Yeah, I apologize.
No worries.
I just wanted to clarify the writing here. I think this is really good, that we have the Lions Club doing projects out there. And I think from time to time, we said we were going to get a report for what exactly they're doing out there. And I wanted to clarify, who's having these weekly meetings? Is the Lions Club that's having the weekly meetings? So in exchange for them doing projects, we allow them to have weekly meetings at the nature place? Is that what it is?
Correct, that's part of it. They do, their Leo group, which is their kids group, does meetings at the nature place. It's so that they can figure out different projects that they wanna do.
So they're just using that as a place to decide what kind of projects are?
Correct.
And again, if I read the accompaniment here, that they can extend until '21?
Yes, they've been doing it now for roughly three years, looking at doing different service learning projects for children in the Leos, which is the kids group of the Lions Club.
I would like to have a report from them for what kind of projects they're doing.
Sure, we could bring that back.
And I did speak with former councilwoman Martha Simons, who's involved with the group, and she said that maybe by the summertime, they would have some plans, they have some change in their volunteers. And I did suggest that we'd like a report back to council as well.
That would be great.
Yep.
And she, Marth, would you like to speak tonight, or, okay?
Again.
Okay.
Oh, she's here.
Thank you, thank you. Wonderful to see you all begging off of bonchitis right now, so forgive me. Oh my god, we only have four people here. Okay, so we are gonna be bringing a proposal in. Yes, it's only been our youth group that's been meeting, and actually, they haven't met there since last spring. So, but we'll be bringing a proposal in later in the year to work with FGCU professor Ricky Pierce with Wings of Hope, who, as you know, Councilwoman Caramba does a program at Crewe, bringing about 5,000 middle school kids, actually fourth and fifth graders, out to Crewe to give them nature education and science education. And not enough kids here from Benita get to go. So we have a beautiful facility, it's not getting used, and we'll bring a proposal back at that time, have her give a presentation for you, so that we can really utilize that. I know our assistant city manager was a benefit of nature education under Bill Hammond. Lee County Schools with the Monday Morning Group, and obviously has benefited the city very much. So we hope to create people, young kids, teach them science and natural sciences, and benefit our community that way. So.
It sounds wonderful, and I just think we don't advertise what we're, the reason why I pulled it, because I didn't wanna just get it hidden, and consent, I'm in favor of it. So I think we should have feedback from you, so that we, that city can be proud of the efforts that we're doing. And thank you for spearheading that. I just, the only part I didn't understand, what kind of meetings they were there, but it's been explained, so it's great.
Yeah, yeah.
So I move to pass.
God bless you, thank you very much.
Okay, motion to approve, and a second, I'll second it. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to move on to proclamations and presentations, and if we could have the winners of the Lee County Sheriff's Office essay contest in the sheriff's office, please come forward. Thank you.
Hold on, guys, we're gonna, we'll call you up one at a time. Good evening, I'm Corporal Bobby Hunter with Lee County Sheriff's Office. To my left is Lieutenant James Bagioli, and Captain Blake Lilly, and the community policing of Benita Springs. We are your deputies here in Benita Springs. Tonight, we wanna honor all of our students that participated in our 2019 essay contest. We appreciate all the essays. We had to read over a thousand essays, just to find one winner in each grade. That's pretty, pretty good. What we're gonna do now is, when you hear your name, come forward. We have the original essay, so that way it goes back to the parents, so they can have. We're gonna start with Benita Springs Elementary.
Okay. Good evening, and congratulations, everybody. I know there's been a lot of hard work, so thank you. If Alejandro Herrera Penalosa, could please come forward? Okay. Valerie Lagos, or Lagos. Ms. Valerie wants to read her essay.
If I be a superhero for a day, I would call myself Lady Animal. My power would be to talk to animals that are hurt. I would call an animal to help me or catch villain. I would take care of nature. I would clean the homes of animals. People who litter, they have to pick it up. Plants that are poisonous, I will remove them. They might hurt animals. I would never hurt animals. Animals that hurt or tease each other, I will let them live by themselves. I will take care of their babies. If an animal tries to eat their baby, I won't let them.
One thing I forgot to mention, the question for the essay is, "If I could be a superhero for the day, who would it be and why?"
Yes. Next, we have Annabelle Fernando. Would you like to read your essay?
My superhero is my mom, because she helps me when I'm sad, and she cleans my clothes, and she feeds me and my sisters and my brother. And I help her, because she has a lot to do, and she has seven children, and I help her clean. She tries to make me happy, because I feel bad for my brother, because he is the only boy. My mom has six girls and one boy. She wants another boy, and I also want another boy. So my brother is not lonely, and now you know, my superhero is my mom.
Next is Hector Garcia. Is Hector here? There he is. Congratulations, Hector. Would you like to read your essay?
Yeah.
Okay.
The superhero I would be for a day is Deadpool, because I could never die, and I have the skills. I would use every power for a lot of reasons. I would save endangered animals. I would save people in need. I would help the poor. I would team up with the police and FBI. I would help fat people eat their greens and become strong. I would train people to become whatever they want to be. I would buy people presents to make their day, and those are the reasons I would be Deadpool for a day.
Congratulations. Next, we have Francisca. Francesco Gaspar? Nope, okay. Next, we have Mitchell Farhat. Congratulations, Mitchell. Would you like to read us your essay, buddy? No? Okay, fair enough, fair enough. That's, there you go. And here's your award. Thank you. Man after my own heart. All right. Iretzi Estalia Medina? Would you like to read your essay, honey? Here you go.
I would, I could like to be Santa Claus, to give gifts to children who didn't get gifts for Christmas.
Okay, Fatima Sanchez is next. Congratulations. Would you like to read your essay, Fatima? Okay.
I will be a police, because I want to keep schools and cities safe. We all want to live in a safe place. The last reason that I want to help people in case of an emergency and rescue lives of people.
Congratulations. Would you like to read your essay?
If I could be a superhero for a day, I would be Captain America. Why? Well, because Captain America is a kind, loyal, and caring. He is my role model, and the reason I choose him, it's not, not, not his description or his strongness, but what matters the most to me is how he treats others and helps others. If he actually were a real superhero, I would want to be him for a day. I would not care if he didn't have a key.
Would you like to read your essay? Congratulations.
The superhero I would choose would be Wonder Woman, because I can help people who have nothing. What I could do is build houses for them, buy warm meals, buy clothes, make beds for them to sleep on. I can make sure nothing happens to them and protect them whenever they need me. Other things I can do is take out bad guys and make sure that Earth becomes a good place where people are kind and care for each other.
Stephanie Torres Romero? Congratulations. Would you like to read your essay?
The superhero I would choose to be for a day is Malala Yousafzai. I don't know, I can't pronounce her last name. Malala is a Pakistani education advocate who believes that women should have the right to an education. She was almost assassinated by the Taliban because of her activism. Malala was also the youngest person to win the Nobel Peace Prize. I would change the world by changing people's opinions that women are incapable of doing certain things that men can. I believe that women are just as capable as men, and that they should not be underestimated. Even though women today have more career options than they did a long time ago, some people can't push the fact into their head that women are just as capable as men. With that, I end my essay.
I think we have a early favorite here. Aileen Figueroa? There she is. Would you like to read your essay, honey? No? Okay, very good. Here you go. Here's your certificate. Congratulations. Next, we have Giovanni Joseph. Hello, welcome. Would you like to read your essay? No? Okay, very good. Congratulations. Here's your award, Giovanni. Next, we have Aidan Kenny. Okay, I don't think Aidan's with us tonight. Isabel Gutierrez. Congratulations, Isabel. Would you like to read your essay? No? Okay, here you go. Congratulations. Next, we have Hadley Weiss. Hello, congratulations. Would you like to read your essay, honey? Here you go.
If I could be a superhero for a day, I would be Superman, because then I could help people with different diseases. I would want to do this, because I know how it feels to have someone you love have a bad disease. My dad sadly has pancreatic cancer, so I want, so I would want to be able to heal every person with a disease. I would never stop trying to help my dad fight. Me and him argue a lot, but I know in the inside, I love him and he loves me. Due to his sickness, I can, I don't get to see him a lot. So I am just gonna put this out there, I love you, Dad, and I miss you so much. I hate having to walk through those hospital doors and seeing a bunch of sick people. If I had the chance to ask for one wish, it would be to heal all of those people in need.
And the last one I have is Isabella Furiel. Congratulations. Would you like to read your essay? Okay, very good.
If I could be a superhero for one day, I would be my mom. She battles multiple sicknesses and constantly sick, yet she still continues to work doubles almost every night. I wish I could be as strong as her. She loves me and would do anything for the ones that she loves. She isn't your ordinary supermom, and she likes the fact that she stands out from the crowd. So if she's not from Marvel or DC, that's not what makes her a superhero. Even if it was only for one day, I would still be my dream to have her strength, courage, and heart as her.
So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Lieutenant Bagioli.
Good evening. I just wanna thank and put this out, we've been doing this for about 10 years. Without the support of the community, and without the support of the sheriff's office, Sheriff Carmine Morcino, and the council, and the mayor, Mayor Simmons, we wouldn't have this. This is something that's incredible, that the students go to Target, they shop, they get these things, and, you know, it's just incredible what goes on here. I wanna thank Target, the community, and all the local businesses for what they do. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna, just real quick here, wanna go ahead and recognize these young men and women that are here before you. They've done a phenomenal job. All this credit is to them. And in front of you here, and let's go ahead and give a big round of applause here for our community. Thank you.
Just one other thing, I think she's gonna be in the senate one day, so.
So you understand what we had to go through, and how we had to pick these, these winners? The question was, who could be a superhero for a day and why? When they went into detail, it pulls at your heart, pulls at your, you know, your strings, and, you know, these are bright futures here. So, I wanna introduce our 2019 Superheroes Essay Contest winners.
And I just wanna say, I just wanna say on behalf of the city of Benita Springs, as your mayor, and all of our city council here, Councilwoman Caramba, Councilwoman Carr, Councilman Gibson, and Councilman Forbes, congratulations. We remember, although it was a long time ago, when we were your age, and we always listened to our parents, well, I should say, most of the time. So, most of the time, if not always, please listen to your parents. I know sometimes you think they might be saying something for, you know, a reason that you don't understand. They love you, and they want the very best for you. There are a lot of good things in this world, and unfortunately, there are a lot of bad things. So listen to your folks, pay attention in school. Your teachers love you, your parents love you, and we're very proud of what your young children are doing in our community. So thank you very much. Great work, children, great work. Okay, we're gonna move on to mayor and council member items, and welcome, Councilman Gibson, glad you're here with us. We are going, item A is discuss the possibility of allowing advertising on the fencing at the Marnie Fields and soccer complex, and allowing a portion of the proceeds to benefit the soccer league. And this is green sheet number 20-02025.
Mayor, this item is on the agenda per your request. I know that you had had conversations during the Outreach Committee to discussion, and beyond that, we've had discussions with some of the local soccer organizations that were looking to see where they could find sponsorship and funds. So you had asked that we kind of bring this forward for consideration of the thoughts of council.
Right, no, no, absolutely. In fact, this did come through the Outreach Committee. So I'd like to ask Chairman Purdon from the Outreach Committee if you'd kinda frame this for us, kinda where this came from, and what the committee's thinking about.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Jesse Purdon, Outreach Committee Chair, they, the soccer league approached us on this, on this idea that they've, they've been working on really since August. And essentially, it's similar to what the Benita Springs High School does in advertising. The reason is, it's gonna bring, it's gonna bring more players, and it's gonna bring more money to the area, like most of the Collier soccer leagues that have 1,500 people in a weekend down there. They have these all over, advertising-wise, and it gets more of a regional draw. And we're already built in on a very strong soccer community. As you know, three years ago, Benita Springs won a state championship in that, and, you know, they wore their name across the chest, and that was, it really gave us a lot of credibility in there. Additionally, a large percentage of the Hispanic population in Benita is associated with the soccer league. That was the same time when we came to you about Marnie Fields after the hurricane. Same group, you're talking 25.9% of the population of Benita is Hispanic, and about, in the ballpark of 70% of those are in some way, shape, or form associated with what's going on down at Marnie. This would really be a good opportunity for them. It's no skin off our nose. And additionally, if we drive the boat on how, on the, how it's allowed to be done, we can make sure it's not tacky, we can make sure it's not, you know, gonna look bad. We just drive the boat on how it's done, but then we give them the ability to raise and generate those dollars, get more players, and keep, and keep, you know, the soccer community strong and together.
Right. Counsel, Amy?
I have a number of questions. I have already expressed some concern about the advertisement at the high school, so that's not a good example to bring up, because, just starting with that, because I think it's a commercialization of, you know, an area that's not meant to be, and also the size of the signs they're using are extreme. And I just want to understand, the youth league is, I mean, the soccer league is both adult and youth, right?
Yes.
All right. And then it says, "A portion of the proceeds go to the soccer league." What happens to the other portion?
I believe we're gonna do some type of split. I believe we're gonna do some type of split, is my understanding.
Split with what?
With the city.
The city is gonna get some money and then...
Right. For allowing us to do it, there would be, and I don't want to give you the parameters of exactly what the split would be, but yeah.
No, no, you said a portion, I didn't know who the other portion was.
Yeah, no, the other portion will go to the city. So it would be, you know, it's a reciprocal relationship with the city and everybody kind of benefits.
And then again, Marnie Fields, I've been on Marnie Fields, but I don't know how you see it from 75. So I would again have my same concerns that I have for the high school, that I don't want to commercialize that area, because, you know, we have this objective in the council to have improved aesthetics throughout the city. So that would be my concern, and I guess the particulars, if we go forward with this, I think we'd have to be really careful. So that's my only concern. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. But I think you do open the door for stuff that we might not want, if other worthwhile people ask us to do this because they, I don't know if it's a, you know, we're getting a little away from what we should be doing. And how are we gonna increase the participation with this? What are they gonna put the money?
Because it'll bring, the sponsors are what generates the buzz and brings more teams. So you get teams that are coming from Tampa and Miami, who will be coming over to Benita really as a result of a larger net soccer world down here.
So the people who are advertising are gonna be sponsors?
Yeah, yeah, so there'll be, yes, so there'll be...
It's not like the dental, the local dental place?
Well, no, it can be. I mean, it can be, but it could be, it could be a large national soccer sponsor if they want it. It's anybody who wants to.
Sponsor a soccer team, is that why they're doing it?
No, they're just gonna put their sponsorship up there. I don't believe it's gonna be for specific. Once again, I don't run the soccer league, so I don't want to get into the, you know, that minutia, but I, my understanding is they would be able to put an advertisement on the fence, an approved advertisement that we as the city say, okay, this is where it could go, this is how it would look. And they even floated the idea of potentially putting up their own fence and only using that or using the fence that's already there. And also, just to put everybody's mind at ease, the 75 is completely off limits because of the power lines. So we can't even do any advertising there anyway. So it would only be on, I think that's Pine and then that little bit of Terry.
So all of you are on the fields where you see the advertisements?
Yes. And that's, and for us, that's good because you have, you know, on any given weekend, you have 1,500 people who are in there. So they're gonna see the advertisements from within, and then that enough will be enough for business to say, hey, it's worth it for us to be seen by that many people.
Well, given those particulars, I'm more comfortable than I was when I first saw this proposal, only because I'm still trying to work on the high school, you know?
Right, right.
And if we're gonna pressure these, Lee County in regard to that, I think we have to be careful. So I would ask Arlene to just kind of follow up on that a little bit.
When the process started, there was discussion about 75, and the mayor expressed his concern about frontage on 75. And then they looked at possibly building a fence on that, but there are FPNL easements as well as DOT easements, and it would have created a much taller, larger fence, which was becoming more impractical. The discussion was, could they utilize the existing fence? I think what would need to be worked out was, there was understanding there was another group that was interested in helping to sell the advertisement and...
Well, we didn't know the, we didn't necessarily, there's no group necessarily that would per se, but, I mean, it would make sense for us to outsource it to somebody so that we don't have city staff spinning their wheels trying to get, because you guys get a split, now you feel a sense of responsibility to try to do the advertising side. You know, cut somebody in who can make a certain percentage for selling the advertising, then the city and the soccer league both get their part, and we don't have to, you know, be involved in that minutia. That would be my recommendation, but however y'all wanted to do it would be fine. Maybe the soccer league would volunteer to do the whole thing. I'm not quite sure on that.
So the council may want to redirect this back to the outreach committee to come up with some parameters and ideas, and then we can have a proposal brought back to city council with how a contract would work between either a consultant helping and/or the adult soccer league taking the lead, because that was the folks who were kind of initiating it.
No, that sounds great. And I see Mel Bruseno is here from the soccer league. Mel, do you have some thoughts you'd like to add? Please. Thanks for being here, Mel.
Hi, how's everybody doing? My name is Mel Bruseno, I'm here, Benita resident for 25 years, also been involved with the soccer league and involved with the city of Benita, helping and anything I can to help. Just want to say that this is a great opportunity, not only for the soccer league, but for the youth soccer league, for everybody involved into soccer league sports. You know, this can start in the soccer fields, but eventually can move on to baseball, to other sports, and we can look at bigger companies to sponsor with balls, with either baseball balls, soccer balls, basketballs, or even nets or anything like that. That would really help the city and also the people that come every day to play soccer. And we can create, like, they're sponsoring, we can create a day that we can all, the soccer players, we can all clean around Marnie Fields or around the Soccer Complex, which is next to the YNCA, you know, do a cleanup and be sponsored by these big companies that will put their money into it. So it's not only for the adult soccer league, but, you know, it will go down to the youth and baseball and everybody involved into soccer, into sports for the city of Benita Springs. So thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Jesse?
Just one thought, what he hit on was important, too. We're only thinking about the adult league. There's hundreds of kids in the youth league, and they generally come with a parent, two and/or siblings. So we're gonna get a double bang for our buck in regards to the amount of people who will see it, which means there probably will be a larger return on that, because you're gonna get all, you know, if you go in there, you know, early, you might have the youth kids, but then later, you're gonna have the adults or vice versa. So you're gonna get both crowds in that. So it's not just one, you're actually gonna get a two for that, so.
Was there any other questions?
I just like when the committee gets together to also delineate guidelines and where you're going with the advertisement and where you won't go.
Right. Well, I think size-wise is something we need to discuss.
Well, I mean, also sponsors.
Well, and contracts, too, contract size. Is it a half a season? Is it a full season? You know, is it a year? So that, absolutely, yes. We can definitely get you something solid on that.
And Arlene, I'd like you to at least think about, you know, where our position is with the high school, whether this compromises that I know we haven't really followed up on too much, because that's a whole different issue. But that's, I have many concerns about that.
Great. Thank you very much, and we'll look forward, so I'll just, I'm not that I need to make a recommendation, but bring this back to the outreach committee, do the drill down, get the details, and come back and make a formal proposal.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mel. Thanks for being here. Thank you, Jesse. Okay, we are going to commence the transmittal process for the following comprehensive plan amendments. Hello?
Hello, Mayor, Council. Sean Gibbons, Community Development, for the record. I'll be addressing the first small portion of this discussion.
I apologize, I guess I'll read it into the record. An ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, providing for adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment relating to the water supply plan of the infrastructure and capital improvement elements, providing for intent, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. This is green sheet number 2002024. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you again, guys. Again, really just gonna be going over the core content. If you have any questions, let me know. There really is a presentation, essentially what our community development staff in BSU has done, updated the tables, the figures, some of the metrics as it applies to our water supply plan and as it relates to the comprehensive plan the city uses to guide development into the future. There was no core content changes in terms of actual goals, policies, or objectives. It really was more of a data metric formula to make sure that data was complete and up to date, so we can use our guiding documents for planning. BSU, again, and Kim Haskins took the lead on this, and I really appreciate that, she's fantastic, so I cannot give her enough kudos on this. But really, I'm here to kind of answer any questions you guys might have. LPE seemed very confident in their approval of it. Community Development sees no major issues or concerns, so we would seek you guys' approval to transmit this portion.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you get through all this data, they're basically saying that the changes result in our confidence that we have the proper amount of water to drink as we expand.
Yes, ma'am, actually.
I think that's basically what this is saying.
Yes, ma'am, we're currently effectively running at a surplus, and if the projects BSU has in the pipeline go forward as they are intended to, we see no major hiccups of that, nor do they, we'll have a surplus going into the future. Again, there is a finite amount that might require deeper wells, more aquifer drawdowns, but that's gonna be a consumptive use process through the state, so nothing will be happening that is gonna go unchecked or that is not realized going forward in the future.
And it was interesting, it was interesting to note that Benita Springs Utilities said they're gonna bring another well online in 2021, so...
It's kind of part of the project.
I think that's important for our citizens to know that they're well protected, because people are interested in the quality and the quantity of...
That's a big deal, man, absolutely.
Thank you for the effort.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
And this is consistent with the state mandated requirements that we have for the comprehensive plan?
Correct. Motion to approve and transmit?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and transmit and a second. Is there further discussion, counsel? Robe call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
And item B is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, providing for adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use element, establishing the conservation fringe land use category and to amend the future land use map from Lee County Density Reduction Groundwater Resource, DRGR, and wetlands, and City of Benita Springs Density Reduction Groundwater Resource, DRGR, to conservation fringe, providing for intent, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Green sheet 2002026.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just to kind of frame this discussion before we get started, I just want to inform everyone that, as you know, this is based upon a settlement, litigation between the city and the property owner, and a lot of our analysis and information that we have provided has been based upon that agreement and in light of that agreement. So when you see some of the analysis that looks a little bit different than you normally see in a comp plan amendment application, that is the reason why. So I don't want to hold up the presentations, but I at least wanted to make sure we were all on the same page before we got started.
And in particular, this is in reference to...
BG Mine.
Yeah. No, I know, but not everybody knows, okay? So thank you.
Yes, sir, BG Mine.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Depew. I'm here representing the applicant.
Clicker emergency.
She's got it.
Sorry. We have quite a few consultants that have been engaged, involved in this project over the years, quite a number of different disciplines that have been reflected. Tonight, we also have, representing the interest of BG Mine, Dave McCardle and Ned Dewhurst back there, as well as attorney Neil Montgomery. As I said, my name is David Depew. I'm with Morris Depew Associates, and I've been involved with this particular development for, well, almost 30 years now. Property is located, as you know, in the northeastern corner of the city. The boundaries on the north and on the east side of the property are Lee County. Surrounding future land use map designations in the county to the north, which is on the left side of the slide, is Density Reduction Groundwater Resource, which is the county designation and is still the designation of the current, on the current subject property as it is. And to the east, it's the same way. To the east is also the crew lands that have been acquired. And you can see on the aerial photograph, some of the buffer lands that are also on the subject property itself. To the south of the subject property is the city of Benita Springs, and you have resource protection as well as the city's DRGR category. To the west of the subject property is also the city of Benita Springs, and it is the DRGR category. Land uses include agricultural as well as vacant lands and residential lands. To the north and to the east, they're conservation lands, and they are vacant. To the south are some of the resource protection lands, and they are also a mix of some residential and some agricultural lands. The proposed map amendment involves the establishment of the conservation fringe area. It's being requested to bring this property into an appropriate city future land use category. The proposed plan amendment category will facilitate redevelopment of the existing mining site to a low-density residential subdivision. The studies which have previously been undertaken by the city found it appropriate to reclassify the subject property, and this map amendment, along with the accompanying text amendment, will ultimately designate the future land use of the subject property into a category that is consistent with the study's results and recommendations. The proposed amendments will not affect the existing conservation easements that are located on the subject property. This is the language of the text without the design criteria that are included, and the primary language makes it very clear that this is limited to a single property. It's only the property that is before you tonight. The mine property actually meets the criteria of the category itself. Category must include an existing vested mine. The subject property is the only one within the city. The property is adjacent to lands that have significant environmental resource and habitat values. The policy indicates that reclamation will be done in a fashion that is compatible with these adjacent environmentally sensitive lands. The land uses are limited, with residential and residential accessory uses being no greater than 0.522 units per acre. calculation of gross density is done off the entirety of the property in accordance with the text, but the development is actually clustered on uplands or disturbed lands. A certain amount of continuous ownership of property is allowed to come in as part of the conservation fringe. That's the aerial photograph that shows the entirety of the property, and the text amendment includes a series of texts that establishes design criteria, including restoration and accommodation of existing and historical regional flowways, restoration and accommodation of existing and historic groundwater levels, restoration and preservation of the onsite wetlands, restoration and preservation of onsite indigenous upland habitats, and provision of critical wildlife connections to adjacent conservation areas. The proposed enhanced lake management plan will include best management practices for fertilizers and pesticides to improve water quality. It will provide for erosion control and lake bank stabilization, establishment of lake maintenance requirements, and an education program for the homeowners that will ultimately be living in the area regarding things like lake uses, lake bank planting, and erosion control, fertilizer use, things like that. Through the development order process, a site-specific ecological and hydrological restoration plan is going to be developed and submitted for review and approval, including final excavation and grading plans, the analysis of hydrological improvements, and the water budget for the both land and surface and the subsurface areas on the property, for areas that are previously farmed or impacted by mining activities and proposed for preservation or conservation. There will be replanting plans, habitat restoration plans, success criteria, and long-term monitoring and management. Conservation easement for each preservation area is going to be platted as part of the master concept plan. Indigenous management plans will address human wildlife coexistence and buffers between developed areas and the preservation and conservation areas. Landscaping will be native and will be low irrigation requirements. A minimum of one and a half inches of water quality treatment will be provided, which is consistent with the Water Quality Task Force recommendations. Stormwater will be directed into treatment areas prior to discharge into the mining lakes, and the stormwater will be retained fully onsite with the additional half inch of runoff for the developed area. Existing vested mining uses will be eliminated with an appropriate phasing schedule. The existence of proposed potable, existing and proposed potable water wells will not be impacted, and future protections will be established. On-site and off-site improvements to transportation, infrastructure needed to mitigate any traffic impacts will be part of the plan development and will be provided. Subject to prior agreements, roadway design is intended to be low-impact and green in terms of the mechanisms by which the roadways will be established. The plan development project will connect to public water, sewer, and if available, reclaimed water for irrigation. Written verification as to adequate public facilities for the plan development will be part of the rezoning and will be obtained prior to approval. The proposed plan development rezoning will not result in any material detrimental impacts to either existing or future potable water supply and sources for water, potable water supply. Golf course uses are prohibited. In terms of what Lee County has done with some of these, these are a couple of projects that mine reclamation has been undertaken on and that are underway. Corkscrew Shores was the first one. It's off of Corkscrew Road, right where Alaco and Cork... That was over 3,000 acres, and you see there a portion of Wild Blue, one of the three lakes that has been targeted for development, and reclamation has been approved for a couple of others as well. In terms of the city's comprehensive plan, the proposed amendments will establish an ecologically sound basis for reclamation of the property, which is consistent with the protection of the city's natural resources. While the current reclamation plans are consistent with the state requirements, they don't address some of the long-term and continuing protections that the city has sought to establish as part of its development criteria. The objectives and policies found in the city's plan will be implemented by the conservation fringe category, and the proposed amendments will change the county's designation over to a city designation that is consistent with the reclamation and eventual development and protection of those resources. The conservation fringe land use category seeks to promote the redevelopment of the property in a way that incorporates the existing and historic natural systems, promoting design flexibilities to encourage pedestrian connectivity, promote complete street design, and low-impact infrastructure design and greenways. The elements that have to be incorporated into the design and the approved conceptual plans of the required plan development rezoning will ensure consistency in the future with the comprehensive plan's vision. The DRGR, future land use category on the subject property is a carryover, as I said, from Lee County. The proposed amendment would establish the conservation fringe to acknowledge the subject property's existing mining use, establish a timeline for the completion of mining activities, promote the redevelopment of the property to a low-density residential community, and the proposed amendment would eliminate the inconsistency of the subject property's existing use, consistent with objective 1.4 and supporting policy 1.4.1. Proposed future land use map amendment will ensure that the city can keep pace with the projected population increase, providing additional housing opportunities, and promoting a clustered form of development, preserving native habitat and connection to central water and sanitary sewer will enhance the protection of natural resources. In terms of the state statutes, the data and analysis providing the proposed amendments include, but is not limited to, the 2005 raw report, the 2009 Delisi Fitzgerald analysis, the 2013 Baracco report, the City of Benita Springs Citizens Water Quality Task Force report from 2014, and the most recent population estimates and projections from the Office of Economic Development, Economic and Demographic Research. The groundwater, hydrological, and geological reports submitted as part of the application materials also provide the data and analysis, along with the traffic analysis that was submitted, the lower west coast water supply plan from the southwest Florida Water Management District, and the various impact analyses and service availabilities materials that were also submitted. Finally, the various ecological studies and reports that were a part of the application, and the existing permits that have been submitted as part of the application material, the testimonies and exhibits from tonight's hearing are all part of the data and analysis that supports the adoption of this motion for transmittal. The amendment discourages urban sprawl by directing growth in a manner that will protect natural resources, by promoting efficient extension of infrastructure, by conservation of water and energy, and providing for innovative development pattern to reclaim these existing mine lakes. Also, we find that the ultimate design is going to assist in the implementation of the Citizens Water Quality Task Force, including Water Quantity Recommendations 1, 4, 10, 13, 18, and Water-Quality Recommendations 3, 4, 6, Water-Supply Recommendations 1, 2, and 3. I know you don't want me to read those. Based upon the application exhibits and testimony, it's my professional opinion that the application, the applicant has made a proper application for these amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, has met all the applicable goals, objectives, and policies in the plan, and is consistent with the statutory requirements found in Chapter 163, Part 2 of the Florida statutes. It also meets all of the generally accepted planning principles. It's my professional opinion that the application, the applicant has made a proper application for these amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, has met all the applicable goals, objectives, and policies in the plan, and is consistent with the statutory requirements found in Chapter 163, Part 2 of the Florida statutes. It also meets all of the generally accepted planning principles. It's my professional opinion that the application and the testimony provided the necessary record that entitles the request for a recommendation of approval for transmittal. Finally, it's my professional opinion that the proposed amendments properly seek, as currently proposed, to implement a portion of the settlement agreement reached between BG Mine and the City of Benita Springs. Thank you all. I'm happy to answer any questions that can be provided.
Counsel, give me.
I just have a quick question, and it's number thirteen. I think it's just wording. It has to do with sewer provision and reclaimed water. Could you just?
Let me see what slide that was, and I can go back to it.
My question involves whether it says that you only will do residents with sewer, sewers, rather than septic systems?
Correct.
Because at the end, at the end of the sentence, you said if available, that's...
That is for reclaimed water. In other words, for irrigation water, if we can get irrigation water, reclaimed irrigation water, we will extend that as well.
It was imprecise in the language, and I wanted to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Motion to approve?
Second. There's been a motion to approve and a second, is there further discussion?
In a public hearing.
And a public comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak on this item at this time, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Aye.
Derek, any thoughts or anything to add?
No, actually, the next item sort of dovetails right into this.
Okay.
The next item is actually an additional opportunity that has come up as a result of the BG Mine settlement. During negotiations on that property, there was a discussion about adding an additional 30 acres that Benita East 278, one of the parties involved in the settlement, had under contract. We had had discussions at multiple times with BG Mine and Benita East 278's representatives regarding whether we could add those 30 acres to the 248 acres the city is acquiring, that we are planning to use for water quality and water storage. At the time, we did not come up with a plan that made sense. Afterwards, rather than let the option close on it, we continued to have some conversations with those parties, and they proposed a no-cost opportunity to the city in which they would extend and redesign the existing stormwater facilities on to an additional part of acreage. The result actually would be a net increase in acreage from 30 to 40 acres of upland that Matt will ultimately use to make the project a better water quality facility. But the reality is, if you see the two exhibits, it connects two additional pieces, so it actually results in 50 acres of contiguous upland. So, in our sense, we think it's a better, comes out as a better result for us. They will be able to sell the topsoil off that they remove in order to pay for that contract, and it's sort of a win-win. So, we're recommending approval. I don't have any documents for you to sign. We'll work those into the existing agreement as an addendum as necessary. We just wanted to see if there was any appetite from the city council to go forward and do that.
I mean, it sounds great.
Sounds good. I just have a little question on the diagram here. We're getting this little, this whole corner in here.
Correct.
Because you have like little...
The missing corner, yes.
You have little red lines going around. I didn't know if that was the whole thing. No, I think it's a great, it's really good. I would recommend going forward as you are.
And I'd like to thank Dave McCurdle and Ned Dewhurst for bringing this option to us even after we'd settled the...
Great, I'll follow through.
All right, we'll move forward if I can get a motion to grant the mayor authority to sign anything.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye. Gave myself permission to place a signature, huh?
Yeah. No check writing, though.
Okay, very good. And I just want to be clear, because I think there was, maybe the way that I said it, if there was anybody that wanted to make a public comment on any other item just prior to what, Derek, I didn't...
I apologize.
Yeah, no, no, that was probably my fault, but I didn't, okay. Seeing none, we have the city attorney's report or items. Derek, anything else?
Nope, nothing additional.
Okay, wonderful. City manager's items, Arlene.
Yes, I'd like to have Ann Wright come forward just to introduce that, and I do need to make a correction to the green sheet. Ann is going to go to explain how we have a little bit of excess of funds, that we have an opportunity to reapply those funds towards internal infrastructure. The green sheet indicates repairs to City Hall generator, but those seem more minor. We would propose, we do know that generators and new generators, as well as repairs, are allowable expenses that we have clarified. We are still working to determine whether the pumps would be appropriate, but that would be our priority. But should we have to default to the generators so that we fully take advantage of the funds, we would recommend that the generators be placed at the Lyles Hotel and/or the Rec Center, because those two facilities do not have generators currently. With that, I'll let Ann explain how we got to the process of the funding and the opportunity we have.
Okay, great. Hi, Ann.
Good evening, counsel. Ann Wright, Finance Director. We're at our final project related to the FEMA project, the Hurricane Irma project, and this is by design. The way it's structured is that you accumulate all your direct administrative costs that you incurred during the whole project, put it into one project at the end. So, that's where we are right now. We have received $7.7 million of FEMA and state funding for all the other projects, so this is the last remaining project. We've already submitted the direct administrative costs that we incurred, which was mostly staff time, so we were able to submit staff time based on the hourly rates and the fringe rate to have that reimbursed, and the state is currently reviewing that. So, we do have this $250,000 that's available to use for other purposes. It's called excess direct administrative costs. So, we had direct administrative costs, and now we have had a total pot of $416,000 available, which was 5% of the total amount of the hurricane expenditures. So, the $250,000, we are proposing to use for hazard mitigation, and the way the process is designed is that we need to submit a proposal, and then it is reviewed, and they will tell us, yes, we approve for you to use those remaining funds for that purpose. So, we're asking for your approval tonight for that.
And our priority would be the mobile hydraulic pumps as our number-one choice, as a need, that Matt could utilize them as need prevails for the events. And then if by default those are not accepted, we would move to the generators.
Okay, second. There's been a motion to approve and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ann.
The next item we have, I'd like John Dahmer to come forward. He has an update on the city's regulations for mobile food vendors.
Okay.
Hello again.
Hello, John.
What I have placed before all of you is a piece of paper that starts off permitting of mobile food vendors. What you have is an outline form of the first draft of this ordinance. The reason why I'm providing it to you is just to give you an update on the directions that we're going, to show that we are trying to incorporate the direction you provided, and if there was anything that you want to see included, we'd be happy to do that. Now, this is broken up into two different sections. The first is for permitting the locations for temporary food trucks. The second section is, on the back page, is for a mobile food truck park. So, the first page, when we start with it, we define what it is, and we start looking that mobile food trucks are mobile in nature, and kind of what we're looking to do and how to regulate them. We require a permit for the location, and that permit would be approved by you as counsel. The general thinking right now is the process for that approval would be an application, would be submitted to community development and reviewed, and then presented directly to you as city council for your final decision. There would not be multiple hearings, or there would not be a presentation to the zoning board or LPA prior to your hearing. The general standards that have been listed in the bullet point format, those have been taken from some of our current standards. They've also been, to use a generous word, borrowed, as good practices from other locations, and also a few that we have included that were part of public comment. I know that you just received this tonight. I don't know if you've had a chance to put any thoughts together on this, but I'll keep going if there are not any.
I have, I mean, I just did this briefly, but I guess my question is, what do you mean by temporary in the first paragraph? That they don't stay that place, like they're moving or something?
Correct. They would be removed every evening, and the location there would not be one that was set up as like a food truck park, where you could expect food trucks to show up in that location indefinitely.
Well, you could have a food truck that goes to a certain location for a day and then leaves?
If that location was permitted by you. Yes, ma'am. But what we're changing is the idea of how we are regulating food trucks.
You say these regulations do not address food vendors that visit sites temporarily.
Yes, ma'am.
What does that mean?
That means you have a different class of vehicles, like ice cream trucks, or the pre-prepared meals that go to construction sites. This is not intended to address those. Those vehicles simply stay long enough to sell, maybe 10, 15 minutes, and then they're off to the next location.
It's sort of, because it seems to me like it could mean food trucks that go there and stay for a couple hours and then leave, the way this is worded, so I would...
I will take that direction, is to provide a better definition.
And here it says food vendors are registered with the city. What does that mean?
That means we are transitioning from permitting food trucks themselves to permitting the location. Food trucks will simply be registered with the city to show that they have all of their required inspections and permits, and identify which location they wish to vend.
So, there's a process where they, you just get information from them?
Yes, ma'am. And it's really just to verify required information from other agencies.
And I don't, I don't know any suggestions for this, but how did we come up with no more than two mobile food vendors can be located at a single site, and why should they only be 150 feet away? I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent. I mean, it just seems like odd numbers to me.
To address the first question, I had thought maybe we would look at three to five, but there were comments at your previous hearing that talked about two. So, that's why it was used as a starting point. There really is no emotional attachment to that number, except for the fact that it was a number that any reaction to it tended to be positive. That can be changed. In terms of the 150 feet, that was one of those standards that I previously referenced that was borrowed from another location, and they seem to be successful with that number.
Okay, so that's not too little or too long?
I think that is in the eye of the beholder.
Okay, all right. And then, when they say the responsibility for sanitary facilities rides with the permit holder?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that means that if they are going to offer restrooms, it has to be in their own building or...
That would mean that the person that applies, that owns that property or controls that business that applies for the permit would be responsible for providing sanitary facilities.
Would they be temporary, or would they have to be permanent?
At this point, that is still a topic of discussion. I prefer permanent, but that's up to you.
Okay.
So, the idea in this might be that there may be a hardware store, or something like that, that wants to have food trucks on a regular basis. We're not permitting a specific food truck. So, the obligations are on the property owner, and then all the food trucks, any food trucks that's licensed and authorized can visit that facility. But then we're putting all those requirements on the property owner to make sure there's a place for people to go to bathroom inside their store.
But the property owner would also be responsible for regulating...
Correct.
Yes, they would be the permit holder.
And then this is not, there's nothing to do with food park, food truck parks?
That will be when we flip the page.
Oh, okay. And how does this jive with, is this jive with the changes being proposed in Tallahassee?
I believe so, but as that continues to evolve, we'll keep an eye on it to make sure that we're consistent with that, in case that goes through. What is, I think that we are still in the good, because we are not regulating the trucks, we are regulating the location. I would also recommend, in an effort to be consistent, that we do not charge fees for this, because I believe that was one of the items that was specifically excluded.
We felt in the importance of the outreach from the community that we should address this, that we're going to continue our process of addressing it, and then if need be, we can make amendments as the state process goes forward. We don't know the end result of that, of that, as that moves forward.
And then just something else to think about, and I don't have a suggestion, but should there be provision to challenge any of this, you know, once it gets going and somebody doesn't like it, you know?
As the process becomes more written and less... As the process becomes more written and less mental, yes, that would have to be clarified.
Okay. Good work.
Real quickly on the back.
Before you go to the back?
Oh, yes, sir.
On there you have, "All mobile food vendors shall be located in areas in a manner so that they do not create an adverse view or vista."
Yes.
Could that be defined a little better? Because I mean, anybody could just, they don't like the look of a truck, and that's in my view sight, and I don't want to see it, so, you know, lock that down a little better, you know, if it's seeing the, you know, backside of the truck, I don't know. What would you consider an adverse view or vista?
It would basically be how the truck related to whatever building or facility it was just adjacent to. So if you start blocking people's signs, especially if you block them intentionally, it's to eliminate some of the malicious behavior that inevitably arises when two businesses are close to each other.
Okay, so not so much somebody doesn't like the look of a truck?
Correct.
So it's that the truck's not blocking signage for any of the existing businesses in the area?
And we've tried to be pretty specific in not regulating the design of the truck, just trying to regulate anything that's attached to the truck. So we're not regulating a lot of appearances on there. It's really, how does it operate, preventing people from putting billboards on the top of the truck, the like.
Yeah, because I saw that you had on there that no more than three foot off the vehicle in any direction, but also you had no temporary seating or anything.
Yes, sir.
What about like a standing table?
The way we've looked at this is because of the definition defining these as temporary in nature, we were not wanting to provide supporting, well, I'll call it infrastructure to go along with it. If you disagree and you feel that tables are appropriate, the only thing that concerns me is when you start looking at locating one or two food trucks in a parking lot, by the time you eliminate the areas that are required for parking, driving, pedestrian access, bike paths, landscaping, building, you really get into a pretty limited situation, because most developers aren't not going to leave a lot of extra land. There's not a whole lot of space to provide something like temporary seating or shade. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but it makes me nervous on most sites, especially most of those sites that would be attractive to a food truck, where would it be located? So it's not something that I would strongly recommend against, but it is something I would strongly warn you going in that that could be a problem.
Yeah, because on the times that I have visited a food truck, I've usually eaten it right there. I'm not going to get it and take it somewhere else to sit.
And in fact...
Something like Momentum, you can get it and bring it inside. But like, you know, for lunch, if you're visiting a food truck, I'm not going to eat it in the car while I'm driving. I'm going to eat it real quick and then get in the car and then go back to work or something.
And there's some thoughts of that right now in Old 41. There's picnic benches next to the food truck that's there. So like I said, I'm not absolutely opposed to it. It's just something that you should be thinking about going in.
Because I've seen other ones, instead of putting out picnic benches, they basically just put it like a small, like...
High top.
High top table. That way you can stand next to it and eat before you take off, so.
Okay, is that something, do I need to...
They would, they would be responsible to do that. The city, you're not saying the city...
No, the truck brings that with them. They set it out there, and then when they're done, they put it back in their truck and they take off.
But I would assume that we would also want that to be removed every evening when the truck...
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and limited numbers, you know, we don't want them putting out a whole, you know, restaurant, like 10 different tables and, you know.
And we can flush these things out as things approach, because...
Okay, Laura?
No, I'm just saying, we can flush all this out as things...
Yeah, Fred?
Well, two things. Number one, we are, you can't use porta potties, correct? You either have to go in the building that you're working out of or whatever.
At this point, it's not clear in this draft, one way or another. If you wanted to do that, that is an option to you, but...
I don't, I don't think...
We don't want it.
No, we don't want anything to...
Secondly, on Mike's point, I think he's got a good point. I think, why can't we handle that when you go to the site specific? Because there'll be some sites that you could really have a nice setup, other sites may not work out, but we'd be able to tell that and staff would need broad info for the site approval. But I think, I think it's a good idea, but I think we, that would be a better, because that way you're customizing it to fit what's capable with the site.
Right now, I have direction to allow for temporary seating, the amount of which needs to be defined, and any seating would need to be removed every night with the food truck itself.
I don't know. I think we're getting into the weeds with being so specific. I think maybe we just don't do that, and then if somebody asks, we do some type of approval. But don't get, you're getting too into the weeds and, I think, creating work for people.
Well, I think it's already in the weeds, because it's saying that you can't have it. So I'm just saying, why would we tell them that they can't have it? We should give them the option. If they want to have a table there, they can have it, or if they don't want it, they don't have to have it.
In working Councilman Carr's direction, I can just delete the prohibition, and we could, if someone asked for it, we could evaluate it with a request.
Yeah.
Is that...
Because there's no, there's no one site that fits all, so most...
Somebody might say, this table really isn't in the way. Well, maybe it is really in the way.
I will work along that direction.
And John, you and I've had a few conversations on this, at least a few.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I just want to reiterate my comments. I mean, I think when we drafted this in 2012, you know, only eight years ago, however, one of these things where, if you look at what a computer was eight years ago, or your cellphone, or whatever eight years, I mean, just what, point being rapidly changing. I don't want to rapidly change ahead of ourselves, but I don't want to be stuck in the dark ages here. I want to open this up. I want to make it a part of our city, and with, you know, you know, the details, the minutia, yes, we have to get to that. We absolutely have to figure that out. But this is a part of town that's evolving. It's a need, and I'm looking forward to, when do you, walk us through the process? What, kind of, take us down the path. What's next?
Well, what I'd like to do is get the draft ordinance actually written. We could then take it to LPA for their review and then back to you, or we could do what we've done before and take it to you for your first reading before the LPA hearing, and then have their hearing in between your first and second reading. Depends on the timing of your...
I like that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the quickest way, and I, you know, and I've heard from folks, and I'm sure probably others have too, not that we can move any faster than I think we're moving, but I don't want to move so slow that all of a sudden it's May or June, we've got it all solved, and then, you know, season's gone for six months.
I've been told how to get it, so my job now is to finish turning this into a real ordinance, get a schedule for your first reading, and then get the LPA scheduled.
Dynamite. Thank you, John.
I do think we should go carefully in regard to things like seating, because with that 150 distance, you don't want to change the complexion of an area that way. And I think there'll be pressure on us to allow for permitting if it complies with some basic structure, so I don't think we should be too casual about that.
Well, in...
And some cities do not allow any food trucks, like Naples doesn't at all.
Correct, correct. And other, and others, it runs the gamut. It depends on where you look. Some places have absolutely zero regulations, because they allow the state to permit the trucks, and as long as they're not blocking a right-of-way or a driveway, they can be located there. Other cities like the city of Naples, no way, no how. So it really just depends on your preference as to how you want to handle this.
And I know that we don't want to get into the trucks themselves, but, you know, it is possible that they may be painted certain ways, or I don't know if they could have lights in them. You could envision all kinds of issues about the aesthetics of it, so...
I would, I would be concerned about getting into controlling the aesthetics on the trucks, simply because those are regulated by the state, mainly the DMV, and also Department of Health, Department of Agriculture, everybody else has a hand in this. I don't know if we really want to dig into...
No, I don't want to. I'm just saying that...
But you could get that, that's true.
I brought it up from the point of view is because we, it's okay to be a little slow in the sense of not doing everything all at once, because we're going from five food trucks to open it up.
Well, I know that the sooner this is done, the sooner I will receive your phone calls during the day, so I do have a self-interest in getting this finished as well. If there's no more questions on the food truck locations, the second, or the backside of your page talks about food truck parks. This is not quite as lengthy, but I'll just let you know that the way I'm approaching this is essentially permitting an outside bar. In terms of the impacts on adjacent communities, infrastructure, what you're doing is setting up an open-air restaurant slash bar that, whatever impacts you would assume would be associated with that would be associated here. There's going to be noise, it might be louder in some than others. There's going to be design issues, and it's going to be, you're looking at more of a restaurant-type setup than simply a food truck pulling over on the side of the road that does not have the ability to sell alcohol, does not want people gathering there for the evening. They may have their food at a high-top table, but then they'll leave shortly after that. So this is a longer duration of a stay. There is the possibility, or at least the intent on several food truck parks, to have some entertainment, at least on the weekends or in the evenings, so you can expect those requests. And when those requests come in, that needs to be mitigated so that you don't have those impacts on the neighbors. So the standards that you see underneath there are the first attempt to address those and to figure out how these communities are going to work this close together.
And again, the 150 feet would apply to a food truck park?
Well, what, my thought was on that is if we're separating the food trucks by 150 feet, at least the trucks and the parks should also be 150 feet. If there's an intent to have them further apart, we can do that, but I didn't want...
I think it may be closer together. I mean, I'm really off...
Well, if, if they were going to be closer together, there's no reason why the individual food truck wouldn't be located...
No, this is in a park.
No, ma'am, this, the park itself. The boundaries of the park could not be 150 feet away from an adjacent food truck, not within the park itself.
Well, if the park's established, wouldn't it be the truck that's parking somewhere else be the one that would have to get the approval? Like, if we have a designated food truck park, it's set, right? So there's...
Yes, ma'am.
So if there's a truck around the corner, and it's less, it's less than 150 feet, that person, the food, who has to move?
Whoever comes first has the right to be there. Whoever comes second has got to meet that separation.
Well, but what if a park is approved? So then do we say, well, then nobody else in that 150-feet location can get a permit to have a...
No location within that 150 feet would be approved. That is correct. But 151 feet, that could be approved.
And 150 feet's really not that far. Like downtown, it's a half a block.
Like I said, yeah, it's not far at all.
And like I said, that was, that was used from another jurisdiction, and it was simply intended to be a starting point for our conversation. So if there is feeling that it should be more, should be less, maybe we don't have a separation, I can accept all that direction and figure out what we do with this.
What jurisdiction has 150 feet?
That was Fort Myers, and that was the only one that I saw initially that had a separation between them specifically identified.
How's that working?
Yeah, well, that would, once again, I think that's in the eye of the beholder.
Counsel, anything else?
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Yes, sir.
Arlene?
Yes. To give you all an update, today we had our pre-proposal conference, and Carly and I were present with CBRE today. We had approximately 10 folks here. Some of them were local developers, and some were from out of the area as well. We additionally had five participants on the phone. To date, CBRE is very excited, because we currently have 71 pre-registered, which means that they are participating in the RFP process. We don't necessarily know that we'll get 71 proposals, but there is interest in the development community of 71 registrants. Just as a reminder, written questions will be due by February 14th by developers, and the actual bid closing is April 14th. The, today's meeting was recorded for sound. We will have a synopsis of that on the website, and any questions that were asked will be posted with the answers. And there was a couple follow-up questions that we needed some additional information from community development from, and those will also be posted on the website for anyone to review.
Okay.
I'd also like to let you know that we're working on a ribbon cutting. I believe most of you have been notified for Monday, February 24th at 11:00 a.m. with Collier County for Logan Boulevard, so we're working to confirm that as well. More details to come. And also wanted to let you know that Laura has been working with Matt, myself, and the mayor on a press release. As you may be well aware, the governor has included Benita, City Benita Springs in his, in their press release, so has Lee County. We felt it was important to list all of the grant opportunities that we have been identified for. Laura will be forwarding you all a copy of the press release. Just to clarify, in combination of our number-one priority, which is stormwater, we are looking at being identified for approximately $25,609,919 in grants currently. This is a combination of FEMA state grants and water quality and federal grants, federal, CDBG and FEMA grants as well. These do include our HMGP, or two HMGP projects that we've moved forward with, that we've got contracts for in place. Some of them, we have been notified by a notice of award. So as we continue that process, we'll bring those forward. But we did want to have a press release, so we can lay out each of the titles of the funding sources that were receiving the dollar amounts and the approximate match as well.
Great.
Forward to it. Great news. Matt, do you have anything?
Oh.
Okay.
And the other thing, Mayor, I will be gone tomorrow and Friday at the Florida City County Managers Association Winter Institute, but I'm available by phone if you need me. But Matt will be at the helm.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You can harass him.
You can harass Matt. Great, um, okay, anything else? Okay, dynamite. Mayor and council member reports. Amy?
Okay, I'll just give you a list, because we'll get out on the reason why, some of us all attended the Chief Dagel's Retirement Party, which was lovely, and I just want to extend a public thank you to him for his years of service. And also congratulations to our Greg DeWitt, who was, had his official installation as chief of the fire service. So those were two happy occasions, and we enjoyed that very much. I also attended a steering committee meeting for the Blue Zones at Arthrex, which was fascinating. It was held in the Innovation Hotel, which was really not open, but they opened it to us. And just having the opportunity to have a tour of that facility and to be part of the Blue Zone projects, where they're just trying to extend that mission of wellness to as many communities as possible, and they're hoping that Benita Springs will help to get the message out and have people just try to do the best they can with their health. So that was interesting. I also went to the crew meeting, where they showed some really great progress on their trails, and I'm still looking forward to trying the trail that's out way east on Benita Beach, Beach Road, which I've been watching them improve, and now it's open, but I haven't gotten out there, but it's supposed to be great. And I also went to the ribbon cutting for the Lee County Sheriff's Southern District Office, and that was fun, to get another tour of that and to see a number of our community police there. And we have, it has, is a very good facility for South Lee that's just located just on the Benita Springs, Astero border. Let's see what else. I also went to, I've been to a lot of meetings, so anyway, the Horizon Council Annual Meeting, which was, again, interesting, where they had Larry Burns, who talked on automotive vehicles, self-drive vehicles, and also innovations, and that was fascinating. And I was able to interact with a number of people there, including some of our Lee County people and some of the staff there, and I'm trying to get our message across whenever I do that, and I think I did a little bit of that. And finally, I met with Michael Martin, FGCU president, and Arlene. We just did an informational meeting, and this came out of one of my Horizon Council meetings, where he was interested in exploring the potential for a performing arts center in South Lee. So we thought, well, maybe we should just find out, so maybe we could possibly get it in Benita, but it's very long-term, and we just had a talk. It was nothing more substantive than just information gathering, so I just wanted to[1715.66] gathering. So I just wanted to inform the council. And that was it.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes. I'd like to know of counsel, since it's been a few years since we entered into agreement with Wonder Gardens, Inc., if we want, as a city, to reevaluate and renegotiate the contract. If yes, we need to give them six months' notice. So I would like to. So I'd make a motion that we notify the Wonder Gardens that we'd like to...
And specifically to just kind of look at the entire agreement?
Well, it's been three years, and they're doing very well. And, you know, we gave them $3.5 million. And so, you know...
I think it's important that, I mean, I'm interested in getting a report from the Everglades Water Garden, which I think we probably should be asking for, along with some of the other activities that we do. I think I've talked to Arlene about this. It's just that we've, we've been so busy that we probably haven't had a reporting system there. And I think, and I'm not against looking at that contract, you know, because it was an open-ended contract, and we didn't even have a time when, when we would try to look at it again. And even though they are doing quite well, you know, we are negotiating them with a potential lease. So I think it's very difficult to do this at this time. So I would prefer that we just have a conversation with them and say, you know, where are you? What are you doing? And what are your long-range plans? And is there some time when we could, you know, once we move beyond the lease, to see if that's possible, that we could get something?
One, one thing to consider is, now that you mention it, we are looking into a lease for the additional space.
Right.
It may be appropriate for us to look at that as a holistic issue. And maybe, maybe look at how we might address the entire lease, not just the one space. And so if we were to do that, to address the larger parcel, even if it didn't result in a change in the actual terms, Councilwoman Carr is correct, we would need to notice them at least six months in advance. Perhaps by doing that now, the two leases will line up where we can, we can look at this as a comprehensive package.
So Laura, what is your motion? I'm sorry, you'd like to...
Look that we reevaluate, reassess, and renegotiate. It would be great to tie in the other lease.
Okay. And I think, I think you're right. I think it's timely. So I'll second that motion. Counsel, is there further discussion?
And I would like to get an update on what they're doing, you know. And I, and I think that's a great suggestion from Derek, to handle them both at the same time, because I think it would be awkward to do it separately.
How has the negotiations been on the RFP?
They're continuing to ask for additional updated information. We have been in contact with CBRE. I think we have an estimated cost. I guess the, the question's going to remain is, there are ADA requirements that have to be done to the building, no matter who the applicant is, because the city is the property owner, and we would be liable for those ADA issues. They are beyond, and after inspection with Community Development, it is a little bit beyond just the bathrooms. There's doorway accesses and other entrances that have to be made even. I do believe it fits within the approximately around the $100,000 that we have allocated, a little bit slightly over. So the question will be, will we negotiate that lease? When we, who would be looking to do those improvements? If we do them, we would be looking at a higher rental rate. If we permit them to do them under our guidelines of what is ADA accessible, would you want to provide a little bit less of rental rate? But we're getting a range from CBRE. I do know there's more materials that we have requested from them as far as financial documents as well.
And what length of lease are we looking at on it?
I, I'm not sure that they proposed a length, a length back to us yet. And I think we could, I'm not sure if there was any guidance from CBRE on length of lease of how long those rental rates would be appropriate, especially you may want to think as the development of the bamboo property happens, I'm sure there'll be a change in rental rates in the downtown as well. So you might want to look at a shorter range period so that you have time to adj, or a escalator, an opportunity to adjust rates.
Yeah. Or look at it holistically with the whole property, you know, if just do one thing on everything also.
Yep.
All right. So there's been a motion in a second to get some updated information. Update, yes?
So would you, and to...
Send the notice that we wish to, to look at the lease.
Right.
You'd be directing staff to send a notice that we'd like to explore lease.
Yes. Okay. So there's been a motion on that in a second. Counsel, is there further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Laura, did you have something else?
Nope.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Mike?
No, I'm good. Sorry it was late.
Oh, no worries. No worries. You're in the real world. You're working. You're not retired. Fred?
Yeah. One thing that I learned at the, on the way back from the Orlando State MPO meeting, I-75, they're going to start widening it from down at Golden Gate Parkway in two phases. We're talking about they're going to start doing work in two years. It's already in design. And they'll, first phase will be from Golden Gate up to about Cork True Road. And the next phase will be Cork True Road to the Kaluca Hachi River on this side. And what happens after that, I don't know. But that will have impacts on a lot of stuff. And more than likely, the exit ramps at 116 will get moved because you can't widen the road and have the exit ramp in the, in the inside lane. And I would guess that that will also mean that cured the other problem, which the ramps are too short now. You get a real long queue. It even spills out on the need to be shrub. So that's news from MPO.
Okay. Very good. Went down this afternoon with Matt to, we were way down at the, where were we? The Botanical Gardens, way down in South Naples. And there's other parts of South Naples that I haven't seen. So it was enjoyable. We were down there with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and gave them an update on the bioreactor. It was a very good dialogue. As you know, certainly, we've been awarded some funds recently for our bioreactor. Matt, do you want to give a quick update on that?
We, it'll be in the press release Arlene was talking about, but we did get notified about a week ago, maybe, maybe a little longer, the grant that council authorized us to apply for, the $400,000 we were awarded for the harmful algal bloom for Phase Two of the bioreactor. We will be coming back to you because it is a reimbursement-based grant at the next meeting to do some budget adjustments so that we have the money up front so that we can then...
Be reimbursed.
Be reimbursed.
And I just want to mention, Matt, unless you and I talk, but I do want to entertain this discussion again with Florida Gulf Coast University. We have grant money now. Florida Gulf Coast University is here in town. They're looking to get involved with us. They're looking to get involved in this bioreactor. They're getting involved, to be involved in blue-green algae. And I don't want us to be penny wise and pound foolish. If we need to wait till after the elections, till there's two more people up here to have that discussion, we can do that. But I don't want to wait and let this go into oblivion and get lost because we want to worry about a line item on what FGCU is going to do with $80,000. So...
And I would support what you just said.
So we can look at it. We can dissect it. We can dissect the dissection. But time is ticking, and money's coming, and our environment's not getting any cleaner. So Matt, thank you for what you're doing. We, yes, I wanted, unfortunately not able to make Chief Dagel's retirement party, but I have seen Chief DeWitt on several occasions and have certainly wished him the best and looking forward to certainly working with him. And great news with all this money and all these grants. For a lot of years, we've been banging our heads against a wall and feeling kind of ignored. But we're feeling good now, and we want to keep up the momentum. So everybody, keep up the great work. That's what I have. Counsel, anything else?
Yeah, quick.
Fred?
Is there a, if we took a vote today, would we be two votes short or one vote short or would it pass?
Of what?
Well, we had FGCU come in and make a presentation. And because there's five of us sitting up here, and there was two people with, that were in opposition, we didn't have, you know, we had to send away the, one of the deans of the water school and an appointee from Governor Ron DeSantis with his tail between his legs, asking us to sharpen our pencil and do more homework.
And didn't Matt, didn't he have something to do with endorsing that grant you just got?
He did write a letter of support.
Of course he did. And, and we're here telling him, sorry, we'll, we'll see you when we have a, when we have four votes, is basically what we said to him.
I don't think that was the situation.
We should bring it up at the next meeting.
I think we should have more detail on what the proposal is because what the proposal was, was not, in my memory, had anything to do with the bioreactor. It had to do with doing testing for blue-green algae and also to do help with cleanup of the beach. And the reason why I hesitated is because I think that we have a lot of needs in regard to water quality and water, water quantity that don't necessarily include that, because we are not a part of the Kaluca Hachi watershed. I also think that we are in a position where we need to, and we, I think in our next meeting, we're going to get a presentation for all the grants that we did get and plus what we're going to have to put up in order to follow through on that. So before we extend a contract for something that, whereas we would, it wouldn't be bad to have that, I think there are greater needs. And unless that proposal is different from what was, was given to us last time, I think, you know, I'm not really in favor of it.
So I will wait, but the first meeting in April, which will be when our two new members are sworn in, I'd like to bring it up again. And I will make sure that we don't embarrass FGCU for a second time.
Well, does that mean that whenever we have someone come here, that we can't vote against it?
Yeah, it sounds a little...
There's five of us. There's five of us. There's five of us here.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but to imply that this was an embarrassment, I mean, anytime somebody brings a proposal that we just have to, because they happen to be here?
Not in the least. Not in the least is what that's...
Well, that's what you implied by your comment, I think.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry if you took it that way. So we will wait until there's seven people up here, and I will bring up the item again, I promise you. Okay. Approval of the minutes for January 15th?
So moved.
So moved in a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Great. Public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. This is our last call for public comments. So please join us right now.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Fairly new resident to Bonita Springs, and I'm really excited to be here. I moved here for work and had the choice of Fort Myers, Bonita Springs, Naples. Did a little bit of research and settled here, and I'm really glad that I did. I'm fortunate enough to live really close to the river and really close to the amphitheater in Depot Park. One of the issues or concerns that I have regarding the food trucks, I've attended a lot of the events at the park, as well as some of the food trucks at other places. And it's my observation that there is a plethora of plastic bags, plastic cartons, foam cups and foam cartons that are being passed out and dispersed for a single taco, or a single this, or a single that. I witnessed the staff in the trucks overworked and not being able to attend to the garbage that was piling up outside. And I think hearing the mayor talk about being progressive in the environment, being cleaned up, I would urge the council to look into requiring compostable materials for those food vendors and food trucks. That kind of piggybacks off of the river. One of the things that I've done since I've been here is paddle up and down the river. And in four months, I've picked up 117 pounds of plastic bags and almost 330 pounds of trash. I think that, I come from a place that has banned plastic bags for almost a decade. And I think that the city would do well to at least plant that seed and look into it and look into being greener, being more environmentally friendly. That's just one component of it. I've traveled a lot of places and have been to a lot of areas that have really eclectic food truck parks, I guess is what you would call them. And a lot of these cities are requiring these food trucks to not only have compostable materials, but to also have no generators. And the tops of food trucks have a lot of real estate which can be utilized for solar panels. And I believe this is the Sunshine State. And I think that offering incentives, if these food trucks are going to apply for permits, somehow, some way, we need to urge these guys to be more friendly and more environmentally friendly. The plastic bag from the food trucks and the food truck that's permanently stationed on 41, that's ending up in the river, is also compounded by the plastic bags that are dispersed at the dog park, both at the beach and the dog park on Depot Park and the dog park on Terry. The plastic bags that are being used are not biodegradable. They're just straight plastic, and they're single-use plastic. The other aspect of that is, if we want to get into that portion of it, there's a lack of disposal sites for these plastic bags at these dog parks, and especially at the dog beach. At the dog beach, what happens is the tide comes up and there's, people grab the bags from the parking lot, and they go, the dog does their deal, and they're hanging them in the trees, they're dropping them and throwing them in the bushes. And I think it's the, if the city's going to provide the plastic bags, the city needs to go a step above and provide disposal sites properly located so that these plastic bags aren't ending up. So I just want to kind of plant that seed with you guys, and you might hear me come up and speak again with some ideas and comments. But I want to try to see us go in that direction of more environmentally friendly.
Wonderful. Thank you for being with us. Hope to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just a question to follow up, but I'm sorry to...
Yes.
I want to talk to Arlene.
Okay, sorry.
Other members of the public? Or go ahead, Amy. I'm sorry.
There are some prohibitions in regard to, you can't deny straws or something. Is that a state law or something? Didn't they have that in there?
Yes, there are some, there are some state preemptions on...
On, on plastic bags and straws, or just what?
The straws, I believe, are absolutely, I don't know if the, if the plastic mags be through. It's also the clam shell, styrofoam, a few other items.
That was vetoed due to the work of this bill.
It was, it was vetoed? Okay. So anyway, but...
He veto, he vetoed one of the bills.
The straws?
Yes.
Well, we would have to clarify. I mean, I, those are really intriguing ideas that were brought up. But as, in regard to our own dog park, could you just look into that?
We can look into the biodegradable bags and find out if we get a cost estimate. The, the beach dog park is actually Lee County's.
Lee County, that's what I said. That's not ours. So the only thing we do is...
Try to coordinate with them. But we are, we have our own dog park, as well as the Depot Park allows for dogs as well.
Maybe extra garbage facility, trash facilities as well.
Can we not add in the stuff that John's going to work on, that the food truck operator is responsible to make sure that that stuff isn't laying around when they leave?
About cleaning up the area?
That is.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think Derek would have to answer whether you can regulate biodegradable containers for the food trucks.
Let me look at the, all the preemption issues that you both raised, and I'll bring it back at the next meeting. It's an update on that.
Because you could throw it back to the permit holder, the location holder.
Well, it also depends on the scope of the, the preemption. We may not be able to regulate it, but if we then start withholding permits, it's, it may still count as preemptive activity.
Because you don't want to have that styrofoam stuff running around all over.
Okay. Great. Counsel, are other members of the public that would like to speak? Is there anybody that'd like to speak from the public? Okay, seeing none. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good meeting, Mayor.
Good meeting.